We were doing that for a time, but not by school officially. Ellen kinda had to do it as a social worker for a while, which I suppose is really your job thing there. But so and I took that over, so she wouldn't have to kind of do that stuff anymore. But that's a big part of why I announced a lot of my meetings are like that. I also meet with a lot of the boys in school. Um, probably a couple of years ago at this point now, it's my second year doing this. There was some problems, it seemed like overall with grades, boys. Um, it didn't seem to be necessarily individuals that could be dealt with necessarily individually. Like I bet it would try for years by elementary teachers and some of the 4th or 9th teachers to do that. But it just wasn't working the same way. We were in kind of a different situation, especially at the high school where both of the people who are called counselors just happened to be women. Uh, that shouldn't make a difference. We all know it should make a difference. But to some boys that we were having troubles with, it seemed to make a difference. Um, so having a male do some of that with them, I think was probably easier for them to like. Again, it's, I'm not trying to be offensive here, but to listen for whatever reason. Um, it has seemingly, I think, I think it's starting to work. Um, I started with some ninth and 10th years last year. I'll be with the juniors this year and then 10th and some new 9th graders. But then we have kind of a large issue, which many elementary students know. Some of the 7th grade boys had a lot of behavior problems, like attentiveness or disruptions or obstinance towards orders. Like it's been probably more than what you certainly remember when we went to school. Uh, so that is different from what I was on second year too. But that's, so what do I talk about them? When last year, what we did with the 9th and 10th grade boys was we learned how to do a circle. So I had to come to somebody, come and kind of help me how to do that, how to show, how to do it correctly. There's rules of it, when you can talk, when you can't, some of you may have participated in them before. But we lay all the groundwork down, then we kind of get to know ourselves a little bit personally, which some kids know each other, but it's still hard to trust these people. Um, with vulnerable things, I get that with those guys. It's hard to say things that are vulnerable, that you're gonna get a big bump later. But over time, it seemed to get better. But the big thing to really talk about was values. None else seems easy. See if there's something you do at home, do something you do at church, right? But some of these kids, I don't know that they've ever thought about it, their parents never talked to about it. They think it's just a, your kids just know what your values are. I have found that is not the case with all these kids, which was surprising. I think to all of us in our generation, it's a little surprising. But they don't have a clue what that is. So we have to lay out all kinds of different values. We did it on these tables, like a whole bunch of different cards, different words on them. Okay, go ahead and pick the 10 you think mean the most to you. Write those down and we really hammer into those over the course of the rest of the year going, okay, like why do you think this? Why are you proud of it? Um, and some of this year is gonna be, like, we really needed to define ourselves last year, so we knew. The big point was when somebody puts you in a situation where you feel like you're gonna go have, you're gonna have to go against one of your core 10 things. That you really think is important to you, that you have something to go back and those, that you can look at this person and go, I know, yeah, you wanna do that, but. This goes against my core value. I mean, I mean, it gives little plaques, they have all of them on there, they're magnetic. They can stick them in a locker if they want to or wherever at home. But they know, it's like, it's an excuse for them to go, well, I can't do that. I just went through a whole thing last year going, my values and this is the thing, like, I don't wanna do that. So I need to give them some ammo to be able to say no, and it's hard to say no, and, and say yes when it's right to say yes. So that's what we tried to do. And so this year, with the 10th, 11th graders, 9th years, we've done that, because they just started. The 10th, 11th, we can move on to a little bit. So we have some, well, being basically masculinity and like, what's the difference between performing for people and trying to put on a show that you are that? Or, or what things you would really do to prove that you are that? Like, an example would be like, I think some kids have forgotten that really, real strength, at least in the past, like the greatest generation that, you know, we call them that. For reasons, like, what do they do? Well, they protected a whole bunch of people who couldn't protect themselves. That's what they did. In the end, that's what they did. I think we forgot that here in school, oh. If you're strong, that's what you're supposed to do. That is your responsibility. I think you're great at telling kids who are academically gifted, you have a lot of responsibility. You're gonna have to run the show here at some point. So you need to kind of pay attention to what you're doing. And we don't even work on this because you're, you aren't gonna be making decisions. We're good at that as teachers and everything. I don't think we're so good at the other thing. It feels like we're treading in the water that we shouldn't or, um, you know, nervousness or trying to teach our lesson and not worry about those things. So I think it's hard, but to get that message across, that's what I want to try to do this year. Try to really get that message across, because by the time they're little, oh, I want them to start coming talking to the little kids. Talking about what their experience was, what they, what mistakes were made when they were little kids, that they did to other people. That they regret now, they don't say, hey, you know, individual things. Just let them know sort of what it's like, what their values are, so they can. You know, boys who are gonna come back and say, if I'm a little kid, I was gonna, I went through the process, figured out what I care about. To tell a little kid that, you know, geez, I've never done that. I don't know what I care about. So I'm hoping that'll work, so that's my plan, with this whole thing going forward. Um, but I know meanwhile, maybe I'll try to wrap it up, but I just wanna mention, there's a couple of things, like, from my perspective, which is only mine, I don't speak for anybody else. From when we were in school, it's, you probably heard this a thousand times, this is not the same place. It's not the same place, you can't go into the rooms and just expect that this is what we do. You go to a room, you learn about that subject with a teacher that you either know or don't know, whatever, kind of, maybe they're your college, I don't know. And you just move around the day, and that's what you do. And it's close to the building, where you can do that stuff and start your day, but that's sort of what it is. It's not that. I talked to so many kids last year, I had over 100, easy. And like the amount of kids that have no adult in their life that ever pays attention to them, that ever says anything nice. You should have seen the 7th grade space, my phone, like, your grandma would be so happy that you said that. He couldn't even, he could pull his shirt up over his face. So he's never been told something like that before. Have you done something right? It's wild, guys. It's not the same place. So when these kids come here and they spend all these hours a day, they don't look at this like we did. They look at this like home. I, I know what's weird to say, but look at everything else you see. Look at the clothing choices the kids are wearing. This is jogging pants central, right? This is not get all dressed up and go to work, go work today. This is, I'm barely able to roll myself out of bed and do whatever and come. So they're not seeing it that way, and the adults that are here are more to them than maybe some of my teachers were to me, and my teachers were working. But, I mean, the things that kids have told me, tell me about their life, knowing that I'm a mandatory reporter and knowing we're gonna have to go through the process, like, it's amazing. So that, I think this is one of the best decisions the school ever made was doing this. If it's not me, it should be somebody else. Ellen was overworked for many years, which is both buildings. At least now, she's got lunch, she can kind of focus on a little bit and try to get that under control. But, uh, it's a lot bigger responsibility of this school than I think a lot of us realize. And whatever happens going forward, I know there's probably budget things, scheduling, it's gonna happen next year later. It, it would be a shame with this stuff. If, if it's not me, if I can't do it, that's kind of the thing, somebody must do this besides just the social worker on this school. So if I can say that to any of you as you go through your budget stuff and trying to figure out what we're gonna do, if you're trying to most of the hard. I just wanted to say that so you've heard it, so you've understood, like, before you decide to do something about that. Should really think about that and ask some other people about it, ask your kids, maybe what they think about it, um, or kind of anything like that, so that would be good. And, uh, I'm just, you know, I'm just never gonna tell if you're the hand talk to me. I remember teachers telling me that, that, I see, well, you can't do that right now, you're gonna, yeah, I know that. But I'm just not going to do that, it's just, uh. They rely on you so much, when, when you finally hear it, right? And they, they trust you, and they need somebody at school that they feel like will listen to them, isn't a tactic to judge them. And just going to like validate at least something from their perspective, even if it's crazy. But they need a person like that at school. And it's hard, because we don't have, that's not set up in schools. It's not, that's not. So, really, that school did it, I think it was a great call by, I don't know if it was Don or whoever decided to kind of go forward with this, but. It's awesome. So if you have any questions about some of the stuff I do, or anything I say, you can ask. I know I talked long.
I'm sure you have these things, like, every period of the year.
Yes, no, I don't. It's, it's, it's a little disappointing with the boy groups, like, the older kids, Don and I kind of said, well, maybe once a quarter, no. You're done, maybe even the kids at the end of the year, I do that. 10th graders, probably once a month, you know, at least, try to keep it fresh in their head. 9th graders, yeah, probably once a month, kind of depending on how it goes. The 7th grade boys, that might be a whole different thing. I don't know, they were very, very interesting. I've never met anyone like them. They're good, like, they're not bull, but they are very functional, awful, that is, they're, you mess right thing, wrong, and look at that, like, it's, yeah, it's not. I mean, 7th grade is always like that, this is.
So are you working with the entire grade of boys or are you kind of picking?
No, it's select ones. Yeah, we talked, Don and I talked through that, other ones, he's maybe had some issues with, he's different. Ones I have, teacher group or something, but they think really good about doing that. So, yeah, it's kind of selected that way, but it can be all over the board. It can be, here's a kid who's going to be a great leader, but they have no idea how to do it. And they're intimidated of their friends. They should be, kid who can't shut up, loudest person in school, wants all the attention on them. Doesn't matter what trail they may be behind them, as they do that, they need to be in there. Like, kids who have no voice. I'm, I just, whatever the latest thing is, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'll do whatever, I'll just follow you and do whatever the thing, get in trouble. They need to be in there to go up, but they need to stand up for their own values, like. So it isn't about, are they the good leaders, are they the all the troubled kids, are they all the quiet ones? No, and there's probably some who are leaving out that could be in there, but it has to be a mix like that, or else. I did, I don't know that the kids would take it seriously enough.
Right.
So one of the things we do say is, you're all picked for a reason, but definitely no matter what we pick you for. You have an influence over people, or you have the ability to have an influence over people, and if you don't learn to control that or use it. This is gonna be a worse place, your life's gonna be worse for it, but we gotta figure out how to do this. And that's, that's the messy way.
Awesome.
So it's worked so far. I don't get a lot of flack or pushback, or this is stupid, or I wanna quit. A lot of that, so, work so far.
Do you exhaust or look for any external resources to help, or there's a book to grow?
Like money or people or?
Yeah.
Um, as of now, we haven't needed it, I guess, and I haven't brought it, I mean, I guess, try to look really.
Sorry, I just hasn't mentioned, you know, type of, you know, budgets and that, sorry.
Yeah, right.
It's not something that could help. There's, there's people.
Well, or something, anything like that, if there's, you know, grants that they need to do that with, yes. Um, whatever it takes, I suppose, kind of. But me personally, no. Teaching and listening, it's enough to go home and try not to think of what.
I could just add that the, the move that we made to move Mike into this role, and then, uh, and the following year then bring James Brady on. Is all part of the SEL push from the state that we actually got some funding for. Not necessarily dollar for dollar what we're spending, but we've made some cautious decisions, um. To approach and to try to meet these kids where they come through the door. And that's, that's work with Mike, Jimmy Brady, Ellen, et cetera. Um, because I think, I think the thing that resonated most with me, what you just said, is it's not the same place that we went. The building's the same.
Yeah, well, that, that definitely.
And we're gonna try to work on that too, but, but, um, it's a different day. And, uh, so I just thank Mike and, uh, and, and Don's leadership and Dan's leadership in that regard. Uh, it falls in line somewhat with the Second Step curriculum. All of this is part of the SEL push that has been with us for a number of years. But actually, they threw some funding at it two years ago, which has helped.
The research does it too, and we just had to speak and talk about relationships with kids, and if you can't do it, nothing's gonna work, and that is true. Like, if you want to talk about what's different. I had many battles with Mr. Hamburg. I had many battles with him. However, I gotta use him in this class, because we laid it out, I did the work, like, it. You know, with that kind of relationship like that, like, kids now would look at that and go, he doesn't care about me, so I don't care about him. And all the work is not work for me, it's his work he's giving me, so. You know, meaning your adjective you wanna use there, but like, it, it's not about here's the work. It's about you as a teacher, and your personality, and do you care about me, do I trust you? And all that's gone, then this whole thing must have started with him. That's why I said that, the default respect that we all are used to is not easily given anymore. And you have to earn it the right way to their way, which is also, you can't just do it your way and demand it. Feel that in your face, you know? Playing a TikTok to show you how super you are. So thanks for letting me talk, I know people have questions off of this, so.
Yeah.
Questions.
I guess I have more statements to question?
Or?
It's a good thing.
Oh, good.
When you first started talking, you, you seemed uncomfortable, you mentioned you had mentioned about not offending us or something.
Yeah, right.
I like how comfortably you rolled into that.
Okay.
Because you, you started there, but you can see the comfort level in, in what you're doing, and, and I think it's very good appreciation.
I think, and I think maybe even you saw that.
Yeah.
The vulnerability in front of a bunch of people, like, you gotta be sensitive to them too.
Yeah.
It's gonna be hard to handle that.
But as a, as a teacher, and I'm, I'm certainly no teacher, I've done with my railroad stuff, I've done a lot of classes and things like that, and they're 50-year-old students, so.
Yeah.
But where I'm going with it is, they look at you as a father figure, you know what I'm saying? You know, and I, I think that's important, and, and they look at the, at the women teachers as, as mother, the teacher's too. And I think we've gotten far away from that in society. If, if we can bring that back, I think that's awesome.
Yeah.
It is, because it's there.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll, I'll throw one out there and be the big person that looks silly.
Sure.
I remember in 4th grade, calling my teacher mom. Not because I didn't have a great mom, an awesome mom, but if you spend your whole day here, it gets to be like family setting.
So, I really don't realize that too. Uh, a last thing I'll say too, the big message that we're pushing on kids now this year, and you know, the last year, is. I tell them, I don't want you to leave, and then they would all laugh, you know, about that. And I have to explain, no, you can leave, but like, come back. I think we forgot, we're a kind of a nice sized town, we're not, I wish I could be a little small myself, but, um. Like, we can have what feels like I belong here if we all do a, if, if we all say, well, no, I'm teaching this because I'm assuming you're gonna live here the rest of your life. Like, I want you to have a role in this town, we're doing it, I want you to feel important, I want you to feel like we tried to get you ready for all this stuff, like, because we want you to come back. And so part of my thing is here, that I kind of wanna get some Boston people that have come back over the years, and somebody that's stayed here our whole lives, like, I almost kind of have too. But like, to just talk in front of kids, and what was that like? And are you proud of you? Why did you come back? What do you like about this place? Like, I hope kids don't always think the same as us, but to see more people right in front of their faces, I'd say that. It's gotta be the right attraction, isn't it? It just feels like it's the right thing to do for the whole town, for the girl her whole life. I don't, I don't want it to just fade off this one spirit.
That's part of the current equation for girls as a community, is fostering sensible lobby for those individuals. You don't get many people that are gonna come in from the outside unless there's some affiliation. And the first thing they asked me, why the hell would you move here?
Yeah.
I, it was like, but, uh, if they're your mom, it'd be hard to personally.
Right.
And so if you could have those opportunities with kids coming up, you're like, it turned like an internship.
Yes.
Right? They know that the value of why there's things walking here, creating future families, future generations. We wanna grow every individual, plays a critical role.
Yes.
In making that happen, you know?
And it's, it is definitely diverse kids in that group too. So, you know, some rich kids, some not rich kids, it'll be nice to, no, there's a difference, so. Some athletes, some not athletes. It's, it's, it shouldn't be all the same thing, so, yeah. But I'm, I'm really happy the school did this, like, I know it might not last forever, at least not one month ago, but, uh. It was good while that, hopefully it lasts long time. It'll still be good and last a day.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike, too.
All right.
And skip 6.0 for now.
Skip 6.0 and move to 7.0 and come back, finance, previous available. So we'll start with 7.1, elementary principal report.
Yes, item number one, you can see we're up, uh, two students from September. So we're at 294 K through six and 335, 12 pre-2 through six. And again, it's added from, uh, September, so we're at 26 students enrolled in the CFE. And as of now, we do have four hundred and eighty lessons, so. Any questions on enrollment there? Uh, item number two, just to review, we had Indigenous Peoples Day on October 13th. Uh, every classroom teacher, along with speciality teachers, presented a lesson, uh, to their classrooms. And that was, uh, delivered either by doing a, a, a lesson or an activity related to Indigenous Peoples Day. Um, each teacher took the opportunity to enrich curriculum by incorporating perspectives and traditions, providing deeper understanding of Indigenous people and contributions within their classes. That was very successful on the 13th. Um, last year, when we implemented that, Angie Bushy put together, uh, a series of lessons and activities that teachers could choose from. Which is a great outline for us to get started. And a lot of our teachers implemented that last year and they carried over the same lesson. Um, which is, uh, very beneficial, because they gained the knowledge in that lesson and they're able to repeat that the following year. And it doesn't double up in some of the grade levels. So they're kind of designated to one certain lesson or activity, so. Uh, thank you to all the teachers, uh, all the special theories too, for, uh, their presentations for Indigenous Peoples Day. Item number three, I had put in there, and our student leaders, uh, presented a positive performance, uh, we kicked that off on the 13th. Just like to thank our student leaders, uh, and our student body, and all of our staff, because when we implement this, uh, it involves everybody. And whatever I think our theme is, like this, for this month of October is welcoming. Um, and really try to hone in on that, doesn't matter what position you are, at Mollison Elementary, we want people to take the time to recognize those students' work. And we straighten that forward, so. So we kicked that off on the 13th. Also, was that, um, like to thank, uh, I am peak therapy, Perry Fine's dental office for the popcorn. Will, I think you were.
Yeah.
And Waters, um.
Helped put up, you know, put up this step up as well, they, they jumped out, were to support that going forward.
Yeah. And our goal, so each teacher, uh, specialty or any area, receive a box of popcorn and they'll recognize students throughout, uh, who'd be this month of October. They display their welcoming, uh, traits or an act of kindness or something like that, so. Um, teachers, uh, we're excited to hit that and get those firsts, um, and it's just great, so we just appreciate it.
But this moment, that one forward, it's definitely, you're pretty cool, it's actually, I know you have winter's coming, so. We'll change names after this. Sure, I don't see a problem, but it was your problem, not ours.
Yeah. Uh, item number four, Learning Academy serves far off. And just, I put in here some, uh, background information for Learning Academy, some of you might not be familiar with it. But it's through a freshwater targeted service program, which is a state funded program. And we've been running, uh, targeted services ever since I've been, at least for a few years now, somewhere in there. Uh, and we ran this after-school program, we call it Learning Academy, but it's through targeted services. And so it begins tomorrow, we talk about eligibility, first graders through sixth graders, who need support academically, uh, but also can, uh, be attached to, uh, development skills. Organizational skills, social emotional, uh, that's a lot of the focus. The format is delivered after school, um, and it's, uh, Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 3:00 to 4:30. And we have two instructors, two teachers. Uh, actually, I think we might be adding a third, because our numbers are higher than, than the two people. So right now, we're gonna be serving 34 students, which is great. Um, and again, that'll be starting tomorrow, Tuesday, Wednesday, 3:00 to, uh, 4:00, 3:00 PM. So we usually start it this time on October, and then we'll end it in April. So our poster of the year. Any questions on Learning Academy? Uh, just an update, fast reach assessments, again, that's our student assessments in the area, K through six in the area of math and reading. We start our second testing window starting on October 27th, which is next Monday. Uh, and this, we test right away at the beginning of the year, this will be our second round, like I stated. And what's great about that, it comes right at the right time, because we'll, the teachers mostly get that completed by conferences and are able to share that information with parents at parent conferences. So, we'll, hopefully, I'm guessing everybody will have that completed by November 13th, which is our, here. Their, their conference times. Uh, and then below that, I have some upcoming dates. October 28th, I have my annual, uh, MESPA, MESPA is Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. We have an annual legal seminar, I hope they play some 28th. Uh, October 31st is the end of the first quarter, those things are flying right now. Uh, November 5th, we have our next re-act training day, again, no school for pre-2 through 3rd grade. And then November 13th and 14th, parent teacher conferences, Thursday from 3:37 and then Friday, 9:00 AM. Any other questions for Mr. Bushy?
Are you doing a lot of the work too?
We are, we won't start that until after Christmas.
Okay.
There's, there's some preparation.
Oh, no, that's fine. And I enjoyed it very much, so.
Yeah. Yeah, you can look for that at, I'm gonna correct this here, after Christmas.
There's a lot of learning that's still up.
Oh, no.
It's a journey, go for it.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to the high school principal report.
Yep, first item there is course enrollment. Um, you can see from the month, December, October, we're down one student. Um, wanna congratulate student council, Ms. Ellen, organizing a very much fun-filled week for homecoming events. Um, as they mentioned, you know, there were quite a few different changes that took place for homecoming this year. Uh, a lot of that came from feedback from our students and our staff. Um, and, you know, like you say, I think it really got a lot more students involved this year in homecoming, with the hall decorating and things of that nature. Um, it's a lot of fun with the, uh, students versus staff games, whether it was volleyball or dodgeball. Uh, it's great to see staff get involved in those things, so. Um, and again, congratulations to Ellie Olson and Caleb Richardson for being crowned homecoming queen and king. Uh, the dance, the building was packed. Uh, I mean, I think we were white maybe on the senior class. Other than that, probably every student, grade seven through 11, was present. It was full, so they had a great time. Um, move of the staff recognition, I wanna make mention of, uh, Carolyn McCollum, or Ms. Mack. Uh, she was asked to speak at the Minnesota DAPE Conference on the 25th of September. There she spoke with regards to what it was like to go through the DAPE program at BSU. What it was like to be a first year, which this isn't her first year, but what it was like as a first-year DAPE teacher. Uh, talked about licensing experiences and all of those types of things, um, you know, to those that are looking to become licensed and DAPEs, so. It was great to have her representing Boston at that conference. Um, wanna make mention of Myla and Tony. Uh, they've both been very busy with securing some grants from Pine and Prairie. Uh, you can see Myla has received a couple of new welders, so about $14,000 worth in new welders. Tony is getting a couple of different items, from random tools, to planers, to, uh, computers and so on. So he's, he's pushing right around that $30,000 mark of new equipment coming in for the kids, so. Uh, you know, kudos to both of them for being actively seeking those dollars and, and bringing some of the latest, uh, technology to our kids. Uh, representative from the Army National Guard was here on the 9th of October, went through the ASVAP test with those, uh, juniors who did take that test. Again, it's not a mandatory test, so it was a matter of wanting to take it. Uh, the interpretation piece of it, of course, starts stretching our juniors in terms of career exploration. Um, our sophomores this week, they're gonna go into the Northern Valley Career Expo at the Alara Center. Uh, Mike and Ben are taking them as chaperones, Taylor Buehler, uh, she has all the sophomores, so she did a lot of the legwork for us in terms of getting our sophomores registered. Uh, the sophomores, basically, uh, in the registration process, they have the entire list of all the careers that, you know, are going to be represented. And then they pick their top three, four that they want to attend, and then, uh, the EXO itself, you know, puts them, uh, into a schedule. So they'll be busy from about quarter after nine until I think that they wrap up right around 11:30, 12 o'clock. So basically, they'll do little, those little mini breakout sessions, hearing directly from an individual from that, uh, profession and so on. Uh, obviously talking about the skill sets needed, the education piece, all of that, so. We had a great experience with the last year, so of course we can work, send you in this year. Uh, Dan mentioned he has his conference on the 28th, I have mine on the 29th. And then lastly, just a little update from the ship ramp. Mine supplies have come back, and so we purchased eight bikes, had helmets and a bike rack. The bike rack has been used a lot out front of the building. Uh, the bikes and the helmets, they'll get used more, so probably in the spring of the year with our fire department. Mr. Hamburg are taking kids out, doing some, some of those types of exercises. Uh, last thing, and it's not a report, there's, I just wanna thank Hannah Olson for her, uh, two years of, uh, working with us. She did a great job as a parent. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, 7.3 superintendent's report.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything in writing.
Yeah, I don't have anything in writing tonight and I don't have a lot to share other than spend a lot of time working with ICS on these listening sessions and getting ready for them, getting feedback from them. And I don't know how to feel about it. You know, officially, we had seven people attend the Foston listening session. Uh, that was disappointing. I'll say I was disappointed in that. Surprised that more parents wouldn't have been here from the local community, especially our younger parents. Where the future, if, if we are, if we choose to do something and are successful in a project, you know, our juniors and seniors aren't going to see any, they're not going to see it. They're going to be off the door. But our younger, um, our younger students certainly will benefit from some future planning and vision that we do for the district. And, and, um, seven people showed up. So I was disappointed in that. Regained a little bit of feel-good. Um, we attend people in Gully. And that was a great showing for the Gully community. And then we had over twenty up in Langby or over in Langby later last week as well. Um, the reports back where the people were engaged and, and asking questions and, and seemed truly interested in, in the vision and the future of our district. And that's really what we want. I think that people will, will give us input once they see a plan. The sad thing is, is we want them to be part of the plan. And, um, the next steps that I'm working with these ICS on right now is we're, we're going to craft a survey that we try to, that we will distribute community or district-wide. Trying to figure out the best way to get that word out. It will be an electronic survey. Some of the feedback we got was that didn't know about it, yet came from people that were at the meeting. So obviously they knew about it. But, um, I think the, the feedback from parents was, um, was that they did know about these listening sessions. Cause I, I mean, I put it out and it's easy for us as a school district to communicate with our parents. It's more difficult for us to communicate with the greater community. And so we need to really think about how we can do that. And got a call into the county actually right now to say, is there a way for us to get addresses of every household in our school district? And I don't know if they're going to be able to help us or not. But anyway, that's kind of the next step. We need engagement in this. It's not, it's not going to be my plan. It's going to be, the school board ultimately will sign off on it, but we need some engagement from a lot of different people. And I'm not seeing that. And I don't know what that means. As I suggested to you in one email, maybe it's a full trust of the school board that they will, you've been elected to make decisions on behalf of this community and, and they trust that you will make good decisions in that regard. I don't know, but, um, I thought we had some momentum, um, coming out of our, our listening sessions with our, with our people, meaning school district people, teachers, staff, administration, school board. And I was just, um, maybe I shouldn't be disappointed. Maybe that's just the way it is, but, um, I was hoping for more from the community. Also working a lot on budget and, and actually the audit tonight, there was a number of pieces that still needed to be kind of fine tuned with the audit. And we need to look at our finances, folks. They're not where we need them to be. And that's can, we can't kick down the road. So, um, it's going to be important. It'll be interesting to see how it's presented tonight, but, um, we have some real, some real hurdles in front of us financially. And, um, again, um, not, not doing anything is not the solution. So we need to think about that. So, um, that's my report and it's been, it's not a lot of things like this, but it's kind of big picture stuff. Somebody once told me that your decisions as a principal are, they come fast and furious and I, and I believe that. And those two gentlemen over there can, can echo that as well. And, um, any given day, you'll have a number of decisions to make. As, but they said, as superintendent, your, your decisions are, and your issues are slower in between, but bigger, more, more visionary. And that's totally where we're at right now with this, with this school district. We, uh, we have some big decisions to make moving forward. And we, we do not have the financial position, nor some of the other pieces of, of this district to just not do something. So there's a lot of work ahead. And, um, I'm hoping that, um, everyone jumps in and gets engaged with it. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Silk? I'll move down to eight point O personnel. I appoint one. He approved, not approved, the contract with the Boston Education Association.
The contract is there. Um, negotiations team is represented here tonight. These, the teacher group did approve it, ratified the contract on their side of things last Wednesday. If there's approval tonight by the board, that will officially end negotiations and, and put a contract in place for the next two years.
Does anybody have any questions for the committee?
General feedback from the teachers or any final questions or something to be done?
Um.
Similar discussions?
Well, I mean, I can watch them, what kind of summary of what we did and I think that's kind of a representation of what that discussion was. In year one, we didn't increase the salary schedule. They'll still get steps. Um, we realized that those that are in the top right corner, don't get anything. Uh, and it was suggested that we, um, add a longevity stipend to the schedule or to the contract. And we did that in year one. Um, it was also heard that, um, insurance went up twenty percent and that was a big deal. So we decided to increase insurance by quite a bit. Insurance coverage showed the offer. I mean, that was most of, um, most of what we heard was, you know, the kind of high five and insurance were the, the biggest concerns at this point. Um, and then in year two, uh, there's a three percent increase in the salary schedule. We still keep that longevity stipend. It's part of the, part of the contract now. Um, and then increased the VBA in the second year only. Did I speak that correctly? Otherwise it was just a lot of some language cleanup and some, um, just determination of timing of stipend requests and payments and things like that.
Feedback I got from the union, uh, Will, was that obviously it was ratified by the teacher group, but it was not unanimous.
Any further questions or is there looking for a motion? To approve or not approve the contract with the Boston Education Association?
Maybe we'll improve the master agreement as presented.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we're going to take a roll call vote. Director Dupont?
Yes.
Director Getch?
Yes.
Director Marcus?
Yes.
Director Munter?
Yes.
Director Nelson?
Yes.
Director Bossler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There's some, uh, some signatures that will need to be.
Yep.
Maddie will get with those people that need to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Silk, and for the negotiations committee and all your work. And I know that's a lot of meetings and time away from family and.
Can they vote Maddie's?
Can you vote Maddie? Everybody that's there, so I don't have to be. Appreciate you all. All right, eight point two, approve, not approve, the winter coaching assignments. That's in the packet. Ryan Hamlin submitted his list. Looks like we have a full slate except for maybe one girl's best book.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody wants to coach Maddie?
No, I guess not.
There you go.
I'd say she's so darn good that she can do it by herself. Yeah, exactly.
Whatever works.
Does he have any football work you may also?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna.
I tried to tell her, yeah. He says, what do you do with lockers?
Bring them.
I said, bring them with.
Yeah, I think Ryan has a few things up his sleeve yet, so.
Generally does.
Yep. Generally does, right.
Looking for a motion in a second for those coaches?
Make a motion to approve the winter coaching.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in paper signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Wait, how far is it from an omen here?
Thirty hours.
I, I thought.
Um, moving, I guess, down, um, reports. We already heard from the negotiations committee. Prior to this meeting.
I do actually have something just, just to throw out that, um, just kind of the next steps maybe. So we're going to do the survey, uh, meeting administratively on Wednesday to look at that. Want to bring that in front of you, Jake, and maybe a couple of board members just to put some eyes on it. Anyway, upon completion of that survey, which will run maybe about ten days, they figured that's what they best practices there. Then, um, that will culminate all the input per se. And they'll start to quantify all those responses, et cetera, and give us a report. Believing that we should probably do that, um, in a work session. And so we need to just be thinking about a date for that. They did suggest that potentially the Monday, um, the next board meeting, the seventeenth.
We're ready.
Just go out to adjourn without you.
Ready?
No, we're ready though. So anyway, um, we'll be thinking about that, but we'll get that information out.
Okay.
So. Catch your breath.
You know, you're ready.
Yeah.
I had to let some kid drop that here.
I know it.
They always come in the front door. It's locked, so.
I know it. I apologize. We can take.
You can hand them to them first and then I'll, or. Sorry, misunderstood.
Well, we might take them back, Allison.
All right, where do you want me?
Where do you want, you want, you need a computer?
No.
No. Let's put you right up there.
Set a lot of front, front of Dean there.
Didn't hit it here, Ernie.
No.
Good.
Not that I've seen it. It's going so fast, getting older. All right, I'll appreciate you while we can be a little bit later.
No worries.
So things I get before I get started, uh, we would communicate. Actually, I have no disagreements with management, uh, no difficulties performing the audit. Appreciate everybody's help in getting this done in a timely manner. Um, so there's a lot to go through and little transition happening there this year too with the business office. So, um, we're optimistic that that will also appreciate that. There is one new standard that if I have the financial statements that I'll go through real quickly. It's really an accounting exercise. Um, in the past, for compensated absences, we've gone through and basically if you get paid out sickly, vacation leave, when you leave employment, we've always set that up as a liability because you actually have to pay some extra out. The new standard required anything that doesn't get paid out for us to look to see how much you might use in the next year. We also set that up. So really an economy exercise. There's nothing extra that's going to cost the district. It's just instead of salaries that you're paying, a teacher, you're paying vacation instead. So it's kind of silly in my mind, but, um, it is something to change. As we go through the reports, you're going to see some references to the complicated expenses. GASB one oh one, that's what that means. Into the audit report then, if you want to follow along, pages two through five. This is the admin doctor's report where you issued an unmodified review, uh, which is considered a good or a good opinion that the financial statements are fairly stated and according to the basic accounting principles. It is management's responsibility for the numbers and accountability for these financial statements. And then our responsibility to, uh, review for its accuracy, to ensure that it's reasonably stated, that's where it's stated. We do have that note in there about the change in accounting principles, um, as well, just to kind of bring that to, uh, highlight that for you. The next section, which is pages six through thirteen, is management's discussion and analysis section. And what this is, is it's a high level overview of some, uh, of the year under review. It is condensed information, but it does provide some comparative information. So for example, if you were to look off pages eleven, twelve, you're going to see the general fund revenue, for example, from two thousand twenty-four compared to two thousand twenty-five, which is basically dead even. Difference between the two years. And then the expenditures on page twelve, you can see the expenditures go far as sixty-nine thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-five as compared to two thousand twelve, correct? Like I said, this is condensed, so it's really hard to get a whole lot out of this, but it might help start generating some questions. The first audited financial statement starts on page fourteen and goes to page fifteen. This is the statement of net position. Similar to the balance sheet, which is this starts with your assets, compares out your liabilities, and your liabilities at the bottom of the net position. So on the bottom page fifteen, this is your retained earnings or equity on a full accord, which basically means we're bringing in like your capital assets, your debts, the pension liability, which we discussed in years past, that compensated absences. So it brings in everything. This is not what you budget off of or anything like that. So I just wanted to point that out. But although we're required to report this, it's kind of hard to take a lot out of this statement. Same thing with the next page, page sixteen. This is the change within those full, full financial statements. So it's bringing in things like your, uh, that change of the mental liability, depreciation, expense, et cetera. You can see both five lines to the bottom, the change was a deficit, three hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars on a full of bill level. Then we get into the fund financial page, which is, you know, where you're budgeting, making decisions as far as. So page seventeen starts that. Um, you can see we have three columns of numbers broken out for the general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund. Then that fourth column of numbers is your non-major fund, which is your food service and community service funds. Those get rolled together on this statement, but in the back we have them broken out. So if there's any questions, we'll circle back there in a second. Two lines to the bottom is the fund balances, which in, within each one of these, the general fund has a fund balance of about two point one million dollars. Of that, that line right above there, that unassigned number, that's the portion that we kind of look at for financial health. So one million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred seven dollars. When we get into the graphs, I'll show this as well, but, uh, it's about twelve percent of your general fund expenditures during the year. So, um, like I said, we'll get to that in a second too, but just wanted to highlight that, that we take that number divided by your general fund expenditures. Like to see it at like fifteen percent or higher. Um, the bigger the district, the, the lower that percentage can be. Just because, um, you know, the number ends up being bigger than you, if you're a small district and you go down four, five hundred thousand dollars a couple of times, you have a hot one down three ways. So, um, just wanted to throw that out there. If you look on page nineteen, then you're going to see the change in the second year. That the general fund, um, you have three lines to the bottom on page nineteen, it's down eight hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred forty dollars. We'll see how that compared to the budget in a second here. The other funds, debt service fund, capital projects fund, were both up a little bit. Once again, we'll get into the non-major funds, but those are down about twenty-two thousand dollars as well. The next section of the financial statements, which is twenty-one to forty-eight, or the circles of financial statements, which, uh, this goes through economic policies, uh, changes in your debt, long-term, uh, capital assets. Lots of information on pensionized. The next section of the financial statements, which is twenty one to forty eight, or the financial statements, which uh, this goes through, accounting policies, uh, changes in your debt, long term uh, capital assets, lots of information on pension liabilities. We can circle back to that section if there's any questions, but Brian also, page forty nine. Page forty nine is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. And so, if you follow all the way on the right, it can be the difference between your actual and the final budget. And so you can see at the top, they're starting with the revenues, revenues are about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than what you budgeted, uh, most of that comes from state sources. Also, something I think to keep in mind here is um, your student activity fund rolls into here as well, which most districts don't budget for the student activity fund, so keep that in mind, that that's gonna cause some discrepancies as well. And that's probably where your other local county revenues are coming in, because that's where the student activity fund is built. Um, then about halfway down the page, you're gonna see expenditures, uh, were about two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars more than budgeted as well. You also then transferred out some money, which we'll get to in a second, to cover some deficits in another fund, uh, overall, uh, you anticipated to be down about seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and we're down eight hundred forty one thousand dollars for a hundred twenty thousand dollar, uh, I guess. Deficit or negative uh, change uh, from what you expected. Uh, page fifty seven, excuse me, let's go to pages fifty six, or fifty five and fifty six, these are the food service, community service funds, as I mentioned before, you can go over that back here. Uh, both of them end with positive fund balances, food service has over seventy six thousand dollars, community service fund has about a hundred thirty one thousand. And if you look on the next page, uh, page fifty six, three lines from the bottom, you can see all of them did have a small, small decreases, but the the community service fund did have a a transfer from the general fund of about a hundred eight thousand dollars, so. Uh, without that transfer, the the community service funds are down about a hundred eighteen thousand dollars, we'll see some of that on the next page here. Uh, page fifty seven, um, this page we go through is detailed, we're on site to make sure that we stay within the red box. And it's just another way to kind of look at all the different restricted categories that you have, and what you have for leftover fund balances. So you can see within the general fund, about halfway down the page, that's where you're gonna see that unassigned fund balance of one million three hundred thirty nine thousand four hundred seven dollars. Um, you do have a little bit of restricted dollars in your LTFM monies, about a hundred thirty nine thousand dollars, um, some money set aside for separation benefits, for severance, et cetera. But then as we go down into the community service fund, you see uh, s- school readiness, for example, started with a deficit forty one thousand dollars, and then. Needed a hundred fifty thousand dollars to get that back to even, so uh, takeaway there, I guess, is. There's a lot, lots of districts have school readiness programs and oftentimes don't bank money, or you can break even, so there is going to be some sort of a transfer made for the general fund to cover that, but uh, this is a little bit larger than than I usually see. And so it's, there's nothing wrong with it per se, but you're always gonna have to make that transfer, so, you know, if you're budgeting for fund one, for example, you might want to take this into consideration too, if you're gonna require another hundred fifty thousand dollars each year part of that. If you don't do the transfer, all you're doing is borrowing from other funds anyway, so that's why we always recommend it, that when your funds don't look higher than they really are, because you're borrowing from someplace as well. You do have some money in in community M D C F P, but this table won't allow you to transfer any of that to other categories, so. A couple of things to look, look at doing possibly is to see what's being quoted for expenditures in that school readiness fund, to see if there's something that could be in a different area that might help that going forward as well. Just something to keep it on, and we talked about that, see who else, and we're outside.
And Brian, that was. That was the question you asked of me two days ago, three days ago, or whatever, and and this reflects that transfer, correct?
Yes.
Yep. And when you left in the summer, that was a question that we had to deal with, and we finalized that the other day.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, like I said, I mean, you wouldn't have been far to do a transfer, but if you go down a hundred fifty thousand dollars this year, and then do something even closer than that after, then all of a sudden, you're like, okay, now we're talking a big number.
Yep.
And schools that go that far down, it's hard to get back caught, so. And the the rest of the report is really just a compliance type stuff, our page fifty eight is the Minnesota legal compliance support state. Provides a bit of an audit guide where we talk to things like such collateral conflicts and interest in work, um, we have a pay report here, so nothing found during that testing, no comment there. And then lastly, pages fifty nine and sixty is the government audit and standard support. We have two E P findings, but virtually all districts have this um, related to us referring to financial statements, as well as uh, separation duties within the business office. Just given the small staff size, you're gonna probably have those findings continuing, um, but we do think that those are mitigated, uh, number one, these get reviewed, approved by by finance before we issue the financial statement, so that helps mitigate terrorists. And then also reviewing those before though, helps mitigate the emergency separation duties, even though we do have to point that out, and it still is. Uh, no changes prior to results, so that's.
Is there anything that, is there anything that would become binding for us to do as a result of these findings? That you don't have, there's.
The state just wants to make sure that you've got some compensating controls in place.
Yeah.
You know, A, we're not auditing our own numbers, that's that's a concern of us comparing financial statements. And then within the business office, making sure you're trying to separate duties as best as possible, so the same person isn't receiving the money, bring it to the bank, do in the bank, all that stuff, there's just risk there, something could happen. But yeah, like I said, most of these districts that that one two percent have these same compliance, pretty rare to have a business office that have enough staff. Always separate duties.
Yep.
So that is the audit report, and I guess, why don't we take a look at the graphs real quick, and if there's anything that we want to circle back to, we do want to do that. The the first graph, as you see, there's that unassigned fund balance, which includes the dollars that are available to spend. You can kind of see where you're at back in eighteen nineteen, and that had been trending upwards, I guess, until this last year, and it's obviously that was budgeted, but I'm not sure what FY twenty six looks like, but. You know, just just something to keep an eye on, and like I said, it's nice to know where you were at, to kind of see, you know, the trend that you're in, and and the last few years, you've gone up a little bit, or on the side of the line. Um, the next page then shows that percentage of your general fund expenditures. Twelve percent for this last year had been around that fifteen to twenty percent of your take, and then back in eighteen nineteen, around eleven percent. Now, a lot of this gets driven based on student counts as well, so students drop, and this is better reflect that as well. Uh, last two graphs, and we went through this, a little bit of detail, food service, uh, was down about thirteen thousand dollars. Um, even before COVID, I remember being out here, that the food service used to down quite a bit, thirty five, forty thousand dollars, and you have a transfer to make there too. So um, you've kind of gotten that back on track, even with increased food costs, and then the last graph, there you can see where that's been tracking. And, you know, from a forty five thousand dollar increase down to a hundred seventy thousand dollar decrease, so certainly something. So, last page is, brush through. Any questions? That one they were looking at, where we're coding stuff to, so we don't have to make one of those parameters?
Yes.
About that.
Yeah.
We did discuss this with with Joel from time to time too, as far as saying that everything that you could go into a different pocket, be able to do it for, and so I think she has looked at that, but just something to kind of take a look at, I think. I remember when we discussed, it goes off, actually, full time teacher, something that got quoted there this year.
Well, I think the correction will be forthcoming this year with some staffing changes, yep, yep.
That, can we go back and look at that stuff and make corrections or no? Um.
Well, it's still.
FY twenty five, no.
Yeah.
Like I said, you had it starting from from zero now, when you ended at FY twenty six, now that that answer's been made.
Yeah. But, I mean, the dollar's been spent, we can quote it wherever we want, but the dollar's still been spent.
True, true statement.
Yeah.
The argument would be is if you could pull it out of a different restricted category, and you have more funds available to spend them down, because.
Yeah.
You know, you don't always want to be carrying over eighty, ninety thousand dollars in other categories, not be able to spend them.
Right.
Yeah, the money those dudes come out of, right, and about that, we just wouldn't have to make the transfer from time to time.
Right.
That's the same. You just make that one time from now.
That's.
Yeah, you'd like.
Uh huh.
Last year.
Right. Going forward, it should help.
Yeah.
Medicine, you know, or not a medicine.
More counting questions from my, person at those numbers?
Do you have questions?
No, I don't. I don't understand, you know, cap question, yeah. I have to sit through this and use chat G P T to figure it all out later, so. Yes. It's a lot of that, yes, if you have a chance to look at it before right now, I'd serve you. Would understand if there was other questions.
Just looking for a motion to approve, accepted, I guess.
So yeah, we'll be looking for a motion to accept the audit report. Motion in a second, and then a roll call vote.
Make a motion to accept the audit report, it's presented.
All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go through roll call vote, Director Dupont?
Yes.
Director Ketch?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Director Munter?
Yes.
Director Nelson?
Yes.
Director Bosler?
Yes.
Accepted. Off the hot seat, yes.
I guess right before um, our board meeting tonight, um, Paul, Allison, I met with a meeting confirmed group from teachers, um, just a couple of high points. They were, uh, expressed a lot of gratitude to kind of how we were able to lay out the calendar as far as the kind of back to school week, um, the week before, um, with time in the classrooms, as well as um, all the events that happened. They were also very, uh, spoke very highly of the speaker that was brought in, both from a staff and from student standpoints at the elementary and middle school and high school levels, sounded like. Um, all the groups, they felt like took a lot out of that. And then um, also, um, some. Thankfulness about how we were able to lay out the calendar as far as the red act training, um, that. You know, having that full dedicated day rather than transitioning back and forth between teacher and learner, um, has been um, well received, and and not only well received from the teachers, but does it, it seems to have been. Well accepted by families. They have not heard any bad comments, I don't know if you've heard anything from the office level, um, but the teachers hadn't heard anything, and it kind of sounded like um, the upper elementary. Um, and then they weren't quite as sure about the like junior high level, maybe you have, um, but they weren't, it didn't look like we have a lot of absences from those upper levels to take care of their.
Right.
Younger siblings, like we thought there would have to be potentially some way for that, but it doesn't sound like that's been happening, so. All in all, you know, it sounds like those things have all gone pretty well.
Good.
And then the only other thing they had, they were asking some questions about the um, the listening sessions and just kind of, you know, what was the purpose behind it? Um, you know, what were we looking for, and kind of just said that, you know, transparency has been kind of the, I don't want to call it buzzword, but have been a pretty. Unified theme through this um, board and administration on this whole process, and and truly right now, it's it's information gathering, information sharing and gathering, and trying to figure out what. The board, the staff, the communities in the district are looking for, what they like, what they don't like, and then help that shape um, the future decisions, so um, that was reiterated, and. Hopefully, with that, you know, you've said it, we've said it now, um, you know, it's obviously been set up board meetings, and and that, you know, those continuous messages hopefully will help continue to permeate through everybody in the public, and. Hopefully, the survey as well responded to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, you know, they, they were asked a question, and I'll say, I was asked the question too, like, I'm hopeful we're sure what these listening sessions were for, like. Were we talking and they were listening, or or, you know?
Were we listening?
Were we listening, were, you know, um, so they just, you know, so they, I mean, then they said even a a staff, and, I mean, I was approached by staff outside of this meeting too, it just were like, what were these for, like, what is the purpose of this, what's the goal, like? So, I I don't know if that's part of why we didn't get participation, if people were just like, I don't know what this is for. Sometimes it's hard to see that when you're in it, and when you're working in it, when you're, you know, you're doing these things and trying to gather this information, like. If you're not in it, like, maybe you just don't understand, like, what what this is all about, you know? And then the last thing they mentioned was just that, um, they would like the any extracurricular positions to get related to F E. So.
Paul, any other comments on that meeting?
Okay.
Is there any other committees that met that wanted to report? Hearing none of that, and our next regular board meeting scheduled for November seventeenth at six P M right here. And we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned at seven twenty six.